Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, December 21st, 2010. My name is Peter Haydom. First item on our agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, changes? You lead.
I just had one very minor change. On page four, under item, the item that's numbered two in that paragraph there, the second to the last line that begins with "Kildare Road," two, T-O, should be added after "Kildare Road."
Okay.
That makes sense. Any other questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions, omissions, changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
None.
Motion to approve been made, seconded. All in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion carries seven, nothing. Carol, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda, In by the Sea, 600 cottages site plan amendment. The applicant could step up to the microphone, make the presentation, we'll consider it.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Bradstreet with Oak Engineers, the engineering representative for this project. With me tonight is Kevin Mahaney of the Olympia Companies and Mark Burns of Foresight Architects. When we were here before you, a month ago, there were a couple outstanding issues. We felt that we wanted to be able to address them efficiently so we can effectively address them even at today's planning board meeting. So we asked for a workshop meeting two weeks ago, which we held, and brought to your attention some of the things that we were doing. And the primary things that we were looking at were the decibel levels of the AC units on the side of the building. We were also looking at a couple comments from, that was actually a comment from In the Butter, but also sight lines from In the Butter as opposed to what occurs today with the existing building. And also, the septic field, the actual grease tracks were bypassed, and reconnection of that. And I think, I believe that you have in your package today, there is a letter from Alfred. This was actually conducted at the end of last week, that all the piping has been corrected. He has inspected it. It now does go through the grease trap appropriately, so that issue is now, I'm hoping, put to rest. What I have provided in the, in a letter to Maureen last Friday, I believe, actually two days ago, in regards to the decibel levels. What we got from the manufacturer's rep is that the decibel levels with an unscreened AC unit, one foot from the face of the unit is 62 decibels. With the distance from here to the nearest property of Butter's line is 62 feet. And with information that you can readily get off the internet now, there's a formula, there's actually a calculator, and that was in the package that I sent to Maureen, that if you put in the distance from your source, the level at your source, it calculates what the decibel level would be unscreened at that distance. And that new level is 26.15 at the property line closest to Butter. So there is no, and that meets the town's requirements for the decibel rating. We are providing a fenced-in area primarily for screening it so no one can see it, and it is landscaped on either side, with the exception of where we have to have the gates to be able to access it for maintenance. So we have provided those changes. In the workshop, if you recall, the only thing that changed on my plans was I had the AC units turn 90 degrees from where they were. I've readjusted them and adjusted the landscaping appropriately. So those are the only changes from what you've seen previously. So the, that has been addressed also. So in other words, the decibel level, and that is actually, I think I gave you a chart, that conversational speech is, at one meter from a person, is 60 decibels. We're now 26 over at this point, so we're well, you can sort of judge what that sound level would be based on that. The item that was brought up by In the Butter was in relation to the site view from his property, or their property. And if you can see on the existing plan, there is an existing deck that extends out to this point. Our porch, well, actually, this is not a deck, this is a porch. Our porch extends his father back. Based on the line, sight line, they actually, it's a break even, they might gain a little bit more available distance to see, plus the second floor stepped back. The deck on the second floor has stepped back so that the actual sight line to the beach is the same or has increased. And that was something that In the Butter had brought up as a concern in the last meeting, so we thought we'd address it also. I believe those are the only items that were brought up in the planning board meeting at the time and in the workshop meeting that we needed to formally address. And without going through the design again, I think I'd like to just leave it right there and just address any comments that the board may have. Thank you.
So that concludes the applicant's presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Open the public hearing. I'd like to, at this point, open the public hearing. Invite anyone wishing to speak concerning the application of In by the Sea for the 600 Cottage reconstruction site plan to step up to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from, questions whatever from the planning board. Victoria?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Stephen, you received the emails that I sent to Bruce Smith?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I wanted to bring the board up to speed then on the emails that I've been, I sent to Bruce. On last Friday, I was going through the package of information, because I know how important the numbers are. The numbers we've been looking at are the numbers at the end, but I started looking at the numbers that we're starting with. And what I did was, I took the letter that you received in our package from December.
Yes.
And I compared it to the letter we had in our package in November. I was looking at existing numbers. And as you read in my email, when I put the two existing numbers side by side, they all changed.
Correct.
And they all changed within impervious. Numbers also changed.
Correct.
So, I sent an email to Bruce.
Yes.
And I said to Bruce, I noticed that all the numbers changed, and I said, at the very end of this email, however, I'm not familiar with architectural calculations, and I would appreciate your insight and explanation. So I sent that off to Bruce last Friday, and I know he then contacted you, was it today?
Today.
This afternoon?
Today.
Contacted you today. And I know that you responded back to me, if I could paraphrase, but I certainly would, I do want to hear from you, paraphrase to the fact that you met with Bruce.
Yes.
And yes, the numbers changed based upon your conversation with Bruce, and that you stand by the new numbers.
That is correct.
And so I sent a follow-up. I received that information late this afternoon.
Okay.
And I sent a follow-up to Bruce saying, I would still appreciate Bruce's insight and explanation, as I'm still not clear.
Okay.
On why the existing building, impervious numbers, they all increased. And my concern was, then we times it by a certain number and we get our final number.
Yes.
So you can see where my concern would be, why did the first floor, the second, why did everything grow from November to December?
Okay.
So Bruce didn't quite give me that insight and explanation, so I certainly appreciate.
When we got the email from, actually a phone call first, and then I talked with Bruce, and he emailed or forwarded your emails to me, and I just had a discussion with Mark, we went over our numbers, and stood by him based on our latest discussions with Bruce, which generated the December letter to you. What the difference is between, let's call it November and December, is our interpretation of the ordinance. If you recall, we had a larger building, bigger footprint, bigger volume, and interpreted the square foot floor area, the volume, and the impervious, I won't say the impervious, but those two at least that were interpreted incorrectly by us, Bruce set us straight. And what it did was, areas that were decking were considered floor area and not, and also impervious. Areas that were porches with a roof, we considered volume, they're not, they're only square footage. So our calculations in November were based on totally different criteria of what is square footage, what is volume, and what is impervious area. When we re, or again met with Bruce after that, he set us straight on what we actually should be calculating. When we did that, yes, we were over, and for that reason, you saw the building change, you saw it move back. The porch was added not because of aesthetics necessarily, but because we could use that as some of our area, our floor area, but we had to step back some of the other units and use deck instead of walls, because walls denote volume, we couldn't do that. So it was all a discussion with Bruce in our interpretation, and yes, what we felt was existing floor area or existing volume was totally interpreted wrong according to the town's ordinances. So back in November, you do have totally different numbers than you do in December, totally different. And it's based on, when you're out on the sidewalk, there were some of those outside staircases, circular ones, the decks and the porches, that we were interpreting one way, the town's ordinances said, no, that isn't how it should be interpreted. So that either came out of the square foot area, or it came out of the volume, or it came out of both. So without going through each individual staircase, deck, or porch, I can't tell you exactly where it swapped, but it does swap. And when we sat down, after we did the second round of calculations, and we sat down with Bruce, we went through each of the floor plans with the square foot area and the volume area based on floor-to-floor height, showed him all the calculations, he matched it to his understanding of the ordinance, and said it was acceptable. So today, we went back through and just calculated our numbers, because numbers are numbers, we could be wrong, but we, based on our calculations and our understanding and discussions with Bruce a few weeks ago, we feel that we have accurately represented what the ordinances are.
And in your cover letter dated December 3rd to Maureen, you asked, you said you met with Bruce, and we have requested an approval letter from Bruce, and it will be forthcoming. Have you received that approval letter from Bruce?
That was a email from Bruce, and we did receive that. I don't know if I have a copy of it in front of me, but we have, Maureen has it, so we do have it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Steve, so you sent an email to Victoria this afternoon?
No, I did not.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry if I said that, it was all through Bruce then.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand what's the...
Just checking.
I sent mine to Bruce.
Victoria, I'll sit. Any other questions?
Just to, did you receive an email from Bruce?
I wouldn't have seen anything that came after 2:30 this afternoon.
Okay.
I saw an email about a week back, where he said it.
I remember seeing that.
Yes. I strongly urged the applicant to confirm their new calculations with Bruce, and they did meet with him, and Bruce did confirm that he was satisfied that the new square footage existing and proposed calculations were consistent with the zoning ordinance. And then there was another, there were some questions raised by planning board member Valent, and she sent those to Bruce as the code officer, and we were still waiting for his response on those.
I'm comfortable with the calculations based on our conversations in the workshop.
Thank you.
And actually, for the record, I believe that your building's volume calculations went down. So while area went up, volume went down. So I don't believe that they all went up, just based on my cross-referencing right now.
I just make one comment about the back and forth in correspondence here. It's my understanding that all of that correspondence from a planning board member to Bruce, and Bruce's response is all part of the public record, and that all of us need to be copied on all of that correspondence. So if it apparently did not happen before our meeting, but I would request a copy of all of that correspondence.
Sure. Any other discussion on the application?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Oh. So, motion for the board to consider? Findings of fact. The Inn by the Sea LLC is requesting site plan review to demolish and rebuild the 600 cottage located at 40 Bowery Beach Road, which requires review under Section 99 Site Plan Regulation. The town engineer is recommending revisions to the plans. The application substantially complies with Section 99 Site Plan Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the planned material submitted and the facts presented, the application of Inn by the Sea LLC located at 40 Bowery Beach Road to demolish and rebuild the 600 cottage be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that the plans be revised for the town engineer's comments dated December 15th, 2010, and submitted to the town planner for review. And two, that there be no issuance of a building permit nor alteration of the site until the above condition has been met.
Second? We'll give it to Barbara, the last meeting. All right. Motion having been made by Liza Quinn, seconded by Barbara Schenkel. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for being really responsive to our concerns.
Oh, thank you.
I think you guys did a great job, and I'm sure the Inn will consider, continue to be an asset.
Thank you very much.
The grammar. Next item on the agenda is the North Shore Road Path Site Plan Amendment.
Members of the board, my name is Todd Gammann. I'm a civil engineer with AMEC, and I'm here tonight to talk about a minor revision to the Shore Road Path project. We got the path permitted in July of this year, as you remember. I sent you a package that includes two small revisions to that permitted site plan. The first revision, they both include boardwalk areas that were originally permitted. The first area is about 2,000 feet up from the start of the project. It's across from the Delano Park entrance number four. It included about 170-foot, six-foot-wide boardwalk, and we're proposing to modify the plans to show that as a five-foot-wide, tuminous sidewalk with a retaining wall. And the reason for that is just cost and logistics of maintaining the culverts that it's adjacent to. That's the first area. We're going to put a tuminous curve, add a catch basin, all the same amount of flow will go to the culvert that feeds that area. And the second area is, also includes a small boardwalk. It was a 40-foot-long boardwalk adjacent to the Tides Edge Road. In that area, we're proposing to eliminate that boardwalk and install a five-foot-by-eight-foot-long precast concrete structure that two culverts will tie into, will have a manhole port. It'll be easier. I've worked with Bob Malley. We just felt that the logistics of maintaining that in both areas, that this would be a better modification for the plans and the costs and future maintenance of that. But for the most part, everything, everything else stays the same. It's the retaining wall that we're proposing, and the first area adjacent to Delano Park is the same retaining wall feature aesthetically that we proposed in July. I proposed it, I actually submitted the cut sheet with the package that I presented to you. Be the same color, probably about three and a half feet wide, tall in its highest place. The drainage, all the drainage features are the same, all the flow still continues to go to the same place that it would have been with the boardwalk. So it's truly just a logistics and a maintenance issue with the public works that we decided that it was in the best interest to change this in both areas. So what, we deem them pretty, pretty minor changes, but we still wanted to bring that back to the board's attention.
Go ahead.
Not to be picky, but I've received calls from people wanting to know exactly where these things are located, and I just wanted to be clear that the boardwalk is across from Tides Edge Road, not adjacent to it.
Yes, it's across from, sorry.
You all set with your presentation?
Yeah.
So our new rules permit the opportunity for the public to make comments on the presentation? Looks like we're not going to have any tonight, so questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions from the planning board? Eliza?
I'm curious, you mentioned that the retaining wall's going to be at its highest point, three and a half feet tall. How does that compare to the height of the boardwalk at its highest point?
That was, it was going to be pretty much the same height. We were going to have to grade down off the boardwalk. It's, I mean, obviously, aesthetically from that side, it's going to be a little different because you're going to be looking at the face of the wall.
That was my second question. So will you see the face of the wall then from?
Yes.
Shore Road?
Yep, and we provided a package to that homeowner.
That will be across the street?
Yep, it's the...
The one of Fordville?
It's opposite the ocean side.
Yeah.
So if you look on Sketch 101...
Okay.
That is where that boardwalk was approximately 170 feet long. It was six feet wide, so now we're proposing just to bring it back to the five-foot, tuminous sidewalk and have the retaining wall in that location, so.
Okay.
Yes, it will be visually...
So the homeowners across the street?
They won't see it any different way, it'll be from this view.
Okay.
So the wall will be on the side.
Oh, okay. So the wall is facing outside?
Right. As you're walking towards town, it's on the right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Liza, you'll sit.
Yep.
Carolyn?
So this makes public works life easier by doing it this way? It does it, is that true, or?
Yeah, it was felt, it was, not only it was, there was some cost implications, it was more expensive, and just logistically, maintenance. I worked with Bob, and we just felt that it was easier for him to access both than trying to get under the boardwalk area. In the Sketch 101 option, that existing 24-inch CMP that crosses the road, nothing will be changed, it'll actually come right out, and it, the inver will be right outside the face of the wall, it'll stay in the same location. So we're not changing the length or the location of that culvert at all, the same amount of flow will feed that area. It was just, it'll just be an easy access point for the, for the public works if you had to clean out the inver or anything like that in future.
Back to cleaning.
Okay, all set. Any other questions? Comments, thoughts, suggestions?
I have another question. I know there are some drainage issues along this general section of Shore Road. With the boardwalk, would the surface be missing impervious? Would the rain have gone through it? And here, is it going to wash off?
Yeah, the same amount of flow will get to that culvert, I guess...
How it gets, how it leads to there?
It's just how it gets there. I mean, technically, the, any surf, any rainwater would have gone through the breaks in the boardwalk, and then slowly gone down to the same 24-inch culvert. In this new instance, flow will be sloped towards the curb inlet, it'll go down to a catch basin, and it'll just be piped out into the same area, go into a little microdepression in front of the 24-inch culvert. So it's just a, it's a little bit different of flow path, but it's the same amount of water.
Will it get there faster?
I, I mean, I think it's already channelized now, so if it had gone through the boardwalk, we weren't going to modify the grading underneath, so there's a channel that feeds it. So technically, some of the water could go down to a catch basin, it's going to hit a sump, so it doesn't shoot right out, it has to build up and then spill down into the pipe. But there is depression under the, under the 24-inch that crosses, so I think, in the end, I think it's pretty much a wash.
Yeah.
Pardon the pun.
Just to understand this, the water will flow on the side of the retaining wall? Along the retaining wall?
Yeah, as you're looking on Sketch 101, if I'm walking towards town, the flow will actually come back into the edge of pavement. So it'll come...
On the retaining wall side?
Yeah, the retaining, the flow will actually, the slope of the sidewalk will be towards the edge of pavement, towards the curb line, and the flow will go down the curb line and hit a catch basin now. The catch basin, you see, will be adjacent to the 24-inch, that's the little...
I see the catch basin.
Yep. So all that flow will come in from both sides. We'll catch it in the catch basin, and then a pipe will feed it back out into that little, you can see the depression, there's a little microdepression there, and then the water has to sit until it builds up enough to spill into that 24-inch cross culvert that'll stay in the same way.
And it'll spill from both sides, essentially?
Yeah, all the, there's, all the hydrology of it, it does feed from both sides, the amount of water that hits any impervious area is the same in both conditions.
So I have concerns about the drop-off, three and a half feet, and the fact that it's more narrow than it was before.
What's more narrow?
Like the path, what, it's gone from, it sounds like six feet to five feet? Did I?
It's always been five feet.
Oh, okay.
It was designed as five feet, you approved it the first time as five feet.
Yeah.
And they're proposing to keep it five feet.
Okay, I thought I had heard six.
Yeah, the sidewalks all the same dimensionally.
Okay.
For the whole path, yeah.
Has there been any communication, other than just the notice of this meeting, with the landowners adjacent to where these two changes would be?
Yeah, we did provide packages to the abutting property owners. In fact, Bob mailed them.
Okay. In addition to the formal notice of this discussion tonight?
Yes, yeah.
All set? More comments? Should I invite motions or are we still have other questions?
I mean, does anybody want to have a site walk? I don't, but...
I don't, nope.
I guess you should bring it up. I'm fine with it.
The consensus is no. Not again, I should say, because we've been out there once already.
Is there such a big drop-off anywhere else on the path? I mean, three-and-a-half feet just seems significant to me. If someone, if there were some congestion and someone were to go off the edge. Am I the only one concerned about that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, when we got the permit in July, the cut sheet for the, there's going to be a handrail on the retaining wall. And I think there's four other areas along the path where we have the retaining wall. So it's the same facade, you're going to see the same color, John Mitchell, the landscape architect.
So the rail's going to keep people from going?
Oh, yes. Everything's the same as the original.
Well, you, you thought there was no rail or anything?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, no, it's going to match over there. And you're going to have the railing, but...
Great.
It actually looks like it's about three feet. I was looking at some of the spot grades there.
Okay, great, that's great.
Have a motion for the Board to consider?
Go ahead, Jim.
Findings of fact, the Town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting revisions to the previously approved site plan for the Shore Road path to convert two areas from boardwalk to fill-slash-solid surface with a retaining wall. Two, the application complies with the standards of Section 19-9-5 Site Plan Approval Standards. Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Town of Cape Elizabeth for revisions to the previously approved site plan for the Shore Road path to convert two areas from boardwalk to fill and solid surface with a retaining wall be approved.
Second.
A motion having been made by Jim Hubner and seconded by Elaine Falander. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion carries seven-nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Portland Dry Cleaners Site Plan Amendment.
I'm Peter Jellison. I'm the property manager for Poncove Shopping Center. I'm here tonight to assist the applicant, Portland Dry Cleaners. They are proposing to become a new tenant, excuse me, a new tenant of ours in the shopping center and will be occupying Unit 7, which is the former Bank of America space. The landlord, Lathrop and Lathrop, have spent a fairly good-sized chunk of money to update this site plan, which badly needed to be done. So that's their contribution towards supporting the applicant. This will be a dry cleaning business, strictly pickup and drop-off. Basically, two employees during the operations, which will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. And there are no exterior changes proposed in the building. There'll be naturally some interior alterations, but the footprints that showed on your plan that you have in your packet will remain the same. We're all here tonight to answer any questions you have, but that's the basic outline of the application.
Okay. Actually, the first issue we have to consider is completeness. Yeah. On each stage? So we have a new procedure, so the public is invited to comment on completeness. So if anyone wants to comment, step up and comment. Hearing none. Any Board members have any issues regarding completeness of the information that we have in order to consider a site plan amendment?
Yeah, I have a question. We don't have any information on lighting or signage. Did you bring any information on either of those with you?
We would propose to naturally follow the town's signed ordinance and would have a, basically approximately a 10-foot-by-three-foot sign, which would be lit saying Portland Dry Cleaners on it.
And that's on the face in front of the unit?
That's correct, right? And there's a kind of a square rectangular space right above the entryway that's where the sign would be located.
And then another sign on the, on the board out front?
Yes, on the common board out by Ocean House Road, correct. Yeah.
Is that the only exterior lighting, the lighted sign?
Correct, yes.
Does that exist? The lighting itself? No. I know the sign doesn't.
There's no lighting there at this point. Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I'm just curious. I can't remember, what's Unit 9?
Well, that's right behind Number 7, and that is currently occupied by Joseph Shalat, who's an architect.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize he was in the back room.
Yep. He's been in for about a month.
So it was empty for that for...
It was empty for...
It was a barber shop for many years.
Yeah, originally a barber shop.
My name was back there.
And then Tulight's Home Care was there for quite a while.
Oh.
Sure.
Paula moved out front.
Right.
We might as well ask it now. Is there a rear access to the property or will the daily dry cleaning be delivered through the front door?
Yes. Customer used the front door and then we are cleaning stuff, you know, we use the back door. So drop off in the back door. Customer used the front door.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out where the back door is then, looking at Unit 9 and Unit 7. Right, where's the door?
There is an alcove that shows on print. I see that box right there.
That's correct.
Okay, so that box is not part of either Unit 9 or Unit 7? The box is a public area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that's where the rear entrance door for the second point of egress is located.
Oh, okay. So I was not clear with how the boundaries...
Sure.
...were defined there.
Should come in this way.
And is that also the main entrance then for Unit 9?
Pulls back here.
No, the main entrance for Unit 9 is right here, kind of halfway down the side facing to the north.
Oh, I see, okay. So we don't have the entrances shown on the site plan?
No.
Why, make sure Elaine was all set. You all set? I think she's still thinking.
Yeah. No, that's, that was...
I did read the explanation on the parking issue. I guess the whole parking lot is one space short of everything, but it's used at different times, so it's not an issue, is what I understand.
Go ahead. My suggestion to the Board is that you apply the shared parking concept, which you've applied in other parts of the town center. And if you apply that, I think it's very easy for the Board to find that there's more than adequate.
Oh, yes, I agree. I just, just...
We don't want to actually say you're short.
It's there somewhere.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions? Hearing none, motions? I invite motions. Actually, we have to make two right now. One, we have to decide that the plan is complete. Go ahead, Barbara.
Motion, motion for completeness, motion for the Board to consider. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Duck Heat Cha of Portland Dry Cleaners for an amendment to the previously approved site plan for Poncove Shopping Center, located at 327 Ocean House Road, to open a dry cleaners pickup drop-off establishment in the space previously occupied by Bank of America, be deemed complete.
Second.
Motion having been made by Boboshenko and seconded by Jim Hubner. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries seven-nothing. Barbara?
Okay, findings of fact, Duck Heat Cha of Portland Dry Cleaners is requesting an amendment to the previously approved site plan for the Poncove Shopping Center, located at 327 Ocean House Road, to open a dry cleaners pickup drop-off establishment in the space previously occupied by Bank of America, which requires review under Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Two, the application does not include information regarding lighting and signage. Three, the application substantially complies with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations, subject to the submission of information referenced in Number 2 above. Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the, the application, that's a duplicate in there, of Duck Heat Cha of Portland Dry Cleaners for an amendment to the previously approved site plan for the Poncove Shopping Center, located at 327 Ocean House Road, to open a dry cleaners pickup drop-off establishment in the space previously occupied by Bank of America, be approved, subject to the following condition. One, that information regarding exterior lighting and signage be submitted to the town planner prior to the issuance of a building permit or occupancy of the retail space.
Second. Motion having been made by Boboshenko and Carolyn, seconded by Caroline Jordan. Maureen reminded me that we still have public comment on the application itself. Usually, we do this in two steps. So if there's anyone else wishing to speak concerning the application itself, or the Portland Dry Cleaners for Site Plan Amendment, step up. Hearing none, any discussion by the Board on the motion? Go ahead, Elaine.
I had, on this part of the motion, I did have a couple of requested amendments. Rather than referring to this space as the one previously occupied by Bank of America, since the site plan has no indication of who the tenants are, I would like either instead or in addition to also identify this as Unit 7, as shown on the site plan.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that kind of bothered me too. I didn't know quite how to deal with it.
I think we can just reference the plan. The other suggestion was it simply says that on the condition that information regarding lighting and signing be submitted, it doesn't specifically say that that signing and lighting needs to be in compliance with the applicable ordinance and regulations. And I think that probably should be added in there, since we really haven't seen anything at all on that point. So that could be done by just, that information regarding exterior lighting and signage in compliance with applicable ordinances and regulations be submitted to the town planner. And the other possible amendment, and Maureen, I'd ask you for a question here, should we make a specific finding regarding shared parking? It is referred to in the AMEC letter that they have reviewed the parking assessment and agreed with the shared approach, but I'm wondering if we need to make a specific finding?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay.
There should be something in the record that says that you, that you adopt this concept of shared parking for the site.
Okay, is there, I don't have the citation for that. Perhaps we could, in the findings of fact, add this as a finding of fact, number three, that the applicant has proposed to adopt the shared parking arrangement permitted by the town center zoning ordinance, and the parking assessment of the town engineer confirms that there is sufficient parking for that purpose.
You referenced three, that would be four if we're adding.
That would be three, and then all three would be four.
Oh, four, got it. That's fine, I just wanted to clear on the record. You weren't, you weren't removing the current.
No.
Then current three becomes four.
I want to understand what the amendment, the proposed amendment is. Barbara, it's your motion. Is it as amended now?
Yeah, I didn't quite get the third one. Applicant has proposed to adopt shared parking allowed by town center regulations.
Town center zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance.
And the town engineer has determined that the, the town engineer's parking assessment confirms that shared parking is sufficient for the site.
Okay. Motion having been made by Boboshenko, amended by Elaine Falander. Second, on the amendments as well, by Caroline Jordan. Any further discussions, questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions on the pending motion with, as amended? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion carries seven-nothing. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next item on our agenda tonight is the roosters zoning ordinance amendment. I'll spare you the third. The Town Council has referred to the Planning Board a request to consider amendments to regulate roosters, Section 19-10-2, the zoning ordinance amendment, public hearing. Somebody going to do a presentation on this? Oh, go ahead, Maureen.
I'll make it brief.
Yes.
The Town Council referred a request to the Planning Board, look at the regulation of roosters, and it was in response to some concerns raised by residents and brought to the Town Council. Planning Board reviewed the concerns, also reviewed the recommendation by the Farm Alliance to not provide any change in regulation. What is being proposed for an amendment to the zoning ordinance tonight is to make it a requirement that if you have a rooster on your property, you have to have at least 40,000 square feet of lot area. Forty thousand square feet is approximately one acre. And what this would do is it would pretty much eliminate the opportunity for roosters in the compact neighborhoods of Cape Elizabeth. There's, if you had an unusual large lot right next to you, then they could still have a rooster. It's an attempt to, I think by the Board, to balance the desires of the Cape Farm Alliance to promote agriculture and the desires of residents to not necessarily have a rooster crowing next door to them in a, in a very dense residential neighborhood.
So what we have noticed tonight is a public hearing, so what I'm going to do is open up the public hearing, invite anyone wishing to speak concerning the proposed amendments and the zoning ordinance concerning roosters.
Good evening. My name is Gilbert Mendelson. My wife, Sheri, and I live at 20 Beacon Lane in Tulight. Early last summer, we were awakened by the crowing of a rooster at around 3:30 in the morning. Aside from the fact that we had no idea that our neighbor had acquired a rooster, we were shocked that it would begin crowing even before first light. The crowing continued thereafter throughout the morning and during the better part of the afternoon. Our neighbor's coop is directly across from our bedroom window, and like most of us, we do not have air conditioning, but rely on the wonderful ocean breezes that we've got here in Cape Elizabeth to keep us cool on summer nights. We closed our windows in an attempt to mute the annoying sounds of this bird's incessant crowing. We could still hear it for hours on end and, of course, lost our breeze. Each of our other neighbors joined with us in complaining about this disruption to our lives, both to the offending neighbor as well as to the municipal officials, with no success. Approximately one month after the rooster arrived, he disappeared as mysteriously as he had come. Our understanding is that its owner couldn't stand the crowing any more than we could. The rooster appeared once more for a brief period of time, but fortunately for us, is no longer present. When we moved to Cape Elizabeth from a suburb in Pittsburgh nine years ago, we were drawn to this community for those regions, reasons which make it such a unique place to live in. An extraordinary, an extraordinary mix of a rural seaside and agricultural community, which values the protection of the environment and the preservation of its lifestyle without unfettered development or the imposition of numerous municipal restraints that preclude each of us from enjoying the lifestyles we see fit. That being said, we're not a community of islands or an industrial park or a residential community. And with that comes the need for each of us to respect the rights of our neighbors and to live our lives so as not to disturb or invade the rights of others around us. As members of this community, each of us has the right to expect no less. And as taxpayers, we should be afforded protection by the town when something so basic, something so basic as the quiet enjoyment of our homes are infringed upon and the offender will not stop. There's been an ordinance in Cape Elizabeth for over 40 years which reads as follows. "No person shall own, keep, or harbor any dog which by loud, frequent, and habitual barking, howling, or yelping should disturb the peace of any person or persons." I don't know how many of you on the Board have ever been subjected to the incessant crowing of a rooster, but I assure you, as a dog owner of 40 years and one who's... crowing of a rooster, but I assure you, as a dog owner of 40 years and one who's always lived next to dogs, I'll take barking every time. Seriously, the point is that if we are constrained to prevent our family pets from disturbing the peace, why shouldn't the same good logic that requires us to do so apply to the crowing crow of a rooster? By the way, an attempt at soliciting some assistance from the police for disturbing the peace was rejected out of hand as the offensive noise was not being made by a human. In the executive summary of the town's comprehensive plan, there are several items listed as challenges. Number four is respecting the rights of private property owners. It's a basic function of government to aid in the preservation of that right. I appreciate your attempt to remedy the problem at hand by limiting the ownership of roosters to homeowners with lot sizes of 40,000 square feet or more. It would solve my problem because the offender has much less than 40,000 square feet. But it ignores the practical fact that a rooster's crow carries a great distance, and lot size does not guarantee separation from the offender in any event. My property is 100,000 square feet, and I could situate a coop 30 feet from one of my neighbor's bedroom windows because the setback ordinance in Cape Elizabeth has been construed not to apply to chicken coops. A rooster is not needed for a hen to lay eggs. Roosters are rarely raised for consumption. Fertilized eggs aren't to be eaten. There's no reason to have roosters unless you're a commercial farmer in Cape Elizabeth, period. Please do the right thing tonight. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak concerning the amendment, proposed amendment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and open up to comments, questions, thoughts, suggestions from the Planning Board. Elaine?
My understanding is that if we... That the... An amendment to the disturbing the peace ordinance that would include roosters with dogs and other pets is not a part of the ordinance that's under our jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So that even if we wanted to make or agreed with you that what we're doing is not sufficient, that's really not something within our jurisdiction to do, and the appropriate place to make that suggestion would really be with the Town Council?
Which is where this recommendation, or not, is going next as well.
Right.
Right.
But your point is well taken, that lot size is no guarantee that neighbors won't be disrupted, and it's something that we talked about in one of our workshops. But it was also felt that you couldn't contain a rooster within the lot, so we couldn't apply setbacks to the roosters, that they roam. I don't know. Maybe... It sounds like your neighbor's rooster was confined to a coop, however.
No.
Oh.
The rooster was allowed to roam freely in the yard.
Yeah, so...
And you could still have a 40,000 square foot lot, and they put the coop right there on the lot line.
Yeah.
And you haven't solved anything.
But, yeah, and that reminds me, I was interested in another comment you made, that coops are not construed as structures that are subject to the setbacks. I was hoping, maybe, Maureen, you could address that. I was surprised to hear you say that.
That's really a call for the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, that's an interpretation issue.
Is that what the code enforcement officer told you?
That's correct. There are many, yes, widely perceived to be structures that are not construed under the zoning ordinance to be structures in Cape Elizabeth.
It depends how it's built. If we're going to ask him some more questions, I'm going to just ask him to step up so we can get it on the record. I'm all set, though, but do you have any more questions, gentlemen?
I do. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for getting up. I appreciate that. I think I'm guessing, and I don't know, that it might be because it's not for humans to live in. Well, I'm not going to speculate. Yep. In terms of being a structure, but the proposed...
I have no problem amending the ordinance to say that the definition of structure to include a coop.
Yeah, I don't...
Tonight.
That gets a whole new...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen some coops that could be very temporary, you can move them around.
And I don't... We haven't vetted that out in a workshop either. I would feel uncomfortable doing that here.
When we were discussing this at the workshop, I think we were discussing lot size. We did discuss... I brought up that I would like to see this at a larger size, because there is a point where having livestock is considered commercial. Was it 100,000?
It's 100, yeah.
Hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand feet, you're a commercial farmer, less than 100,000. I presented that to the board, that why don't we make this at 100,000? And we had a discussion, and the discussion brought it to 40,000. But this will go on to the council, and that's just an idea that I'm sharing with you.
Why was the discussion...
If you could step up, probably should have just had you stay there.
What was the rationale behind reducing the minimum lot size?
There was no lot size previously.
It was more a compromise, I think.
Initially, roosters were allowed without restriction in a residential zone. The proposal was made that perhaps some restriction should be imposed. The Cape Farm Alliance reviewed that proposal and came back and recommended that no change be made in keeping with the direction in the comprehensive plan that we be as farm-friendly as we can be. So the 40-acre are essentially one-acre lot restriction that the Planning Board came up with was an effort to compromise between the no restriction, which was the approach desired by the Cape Farm Alliance, and some significant restriction that other people were suggesting this was a compromise between the two.
Okay, but based on the discussion that we're having this evening, I would hope that you would see the logic that a space encompassing only 40,000 square feet really doesn't solve the problem.
The potential...
I have no problem with 100,000.
In truth, in truth, a delimiting factor predicated on space alone, other than large properties like the commercial farms that we have in Cape, doesn't really solve the problem because of the fact that a chicken coop, which houses the roosters, is not subject to the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance.
So if you had 20 acres, you could still put it next to a home.
Yeah, it's a futile act. In truth, what needs to be done, and I think that there... I'm not going to embarrass him by asking him to call forward, but John Green from the Cape Alliance is here, and I think he's going to write a letter to the Board which may in some way modify what the initial thinking was of the... I don't want to speak for you, John, but there just is no point, ladies and gentlemen, for anyone other than a farmer who is raising chickens, who wants to propagate their flock for commercial purposes, to own roosters in this community. And whether you live in a highly settled area like Broad Cove or Shore Acres or Mountain View, a person... People such as my wife and I, who live in a less settled area but in close proximity to other houses, still deserve the same protection. We're taxpayers.
You know, I'd be curious about the answer to that direct question. I mean, why... Two approaches. One would be to amend the nuisance ordinance that you described. The other one would be, why do you need a rooster? I guess that's a simple question. Why should that option be available for Cape residences? I'm not asking you that. I guess I'm asking somebody from the Farm Alliance to respond. I mean, why would one want to keep a rooster, other than if they're... Unless they're not raising chickens?
Could we have John come up and talk about this a little?
He's a reluctant speaker, but I would appreciate if you... Would you be willing to address that, John?
Thanks, John. I appreciate it.
Hello, I'm John Green from the Cape Farm Alliance.
Thank you.
As far as roosters go and why people need them or use them in farms, I can't answer that question because I'm not a farmer. We could always have someone write in that farms roost... You know, chickens with roosters. What I will say is we were hanging our hat on the disturbing the peace ordinance, portion of the ordinance. In other words, it says in there if a person is disturbing the peace. Well, if a person has a motorcycle, is the motorcycle disturbing the peace, or is it a person that owns the motorcycle disturbing the peace? So our position was, you know, there's something on the books with disturbing the peace. That is the direction the Farm Alliance was taking this without altering any other ordinances. We weren't saying that we didn't want to see some remedy to this. We were just saying that just placing it or dealing with it as is in the current ordinance and figuring out a way to say roosters are part of that disturbing the peace portion of the ordinance. And if worse comes to worse, add roosters under the dog section where incessant crowing fits in, as does incessant barking. So that's sort of the look we were taking, not altering... My understanding was I thought the Planning Board had jurisdiction over those portions. That I did not know, that that was strictly a Town Council issue. So I suppose we would write an additional letter clarifying our position.
Yeah, those other two ordinances aren't land use.
Yes, I see that now. That was our mistake.
And I guess the larger question is, and I missed the workshop on this, is it an appropriate land use regulation to regulate something that potentially causes noise? I mean, some dogs bark, some dogs don't bark. Roosters apparently all crow, and some more than others?
Right.
Again, I don't know. I've heard both.
I think that is the case, some more than others.
Okay. So maybe solving it the same way you solve a dog problem, dog barking problem is a better way to describe it, might be the better approach, rather than land use, especially when the tools we have don't fit solving the problem.
Correct. That's the idea we have.
Grow square footage apparently doesn't solve the problem.
Right. That's why we say leave all enough alone, let's go the other route.
I just... I clearly see this as a potential problem that needs to be addressed. I just don't know if this is the right approach. That's my view on it so far. Go ahead. I was pointing to Victoria.
I would be concerned when we talk about the disturbing the peace section, because it does... It says, "No person shall," and it says, "What they shall not do," and it includes unnecessary or unusual noise. I would say a rooster crowing is not unnecessary or unusual. Roosters crow, so I don't really feel comfortable amending disturbing the peace.
No, we don't have any say in that.
Right. And I wouldn't feel comfortable putting the roosters under the dog ordinance.
Well, it would be...
I don't feel comfortable going in either of those directions. So once again, I would go back to land use, because it's very clear that we have a cutoff on what is considered commercial, and the state does have the right to farm statutes, which defines farm and farm operations as entities and operations associated with commercial production. In Cape Elizabeth, once again, commercial production is 100,000 square feet or just over two acres. So I do support the right to farm, but I also support that I live in a very dense neighborhood, and I would not want to hear those roosters. And so, once again, it was back to this compromise on what do you do for the dense residential, but however, this is... We do have farms, and this is a farming community, and that's why I initially threw out the 100,000, because that would fall under the right to farm laws, which would go back to the Planning Board, because that is land use.
But why would you not include that under the same as the dog barking?
Because they're fowls, they're not canine.
Well, I mean, it's an animal noise, and it's... I guess to me, my first reaction is, I agree with what you're saying, this is not our jurisdiction, but maybe the ordinance about dog barking should include rooster crowing.
Would... Could you ever silence a rooster?
With any animal?
Could you...
Yeah.
I don't know. Can you ever silence a rooster? A dog, you could bring him in. I mean, I could see... Not all dogs bark. A barking dog you can bring in, you could control that, but do all roosters crow? Is this something that you could silence and say, well, you know, that's the correct way to take care of this? Do you bring the rooster indoors?
I ain't gonna have one.
Right, so it's not going to happen. So, once again, they're very different than the dog, and that's why I was thinking you don't handle it with a dog ordinance.
Yeah. I want to make a quick comment now, Elaine. I think we need to focus in on, this is a land use recommendation or not. I mean, if we think there's another way to handle a problem, that's for the political process in this Town Council. But, you know, I'm looking at this very, very narrowly. Is this proposal an appropriate land use amendment to solve the problem, or assist to solve the problem?
I don't think it'll solve the problem.
Yeah, I'm...
I'm sorry.
And then Elaine, go ahead.
I actually think it can help address the problem. I mean, to me, the ideal solution would be a combination of something like a one-acre restriction and a noise ordinance, because we can't... It seems to me quite likely, if not certain, that on a smaller lot, a crowing rooster is going to disturb the neighbors, and we don't want to have the police going out all the time, so that every instance of a rooster being out there is going to cause a problem. By designating a one-acre lot, seems to me creates the possibility on that lot that a landowner could find a spot on the lot where the rooster was far enough from the lot perimeter, so that it would not cause a disturbance. I don't think we can define that setback. I think that setback would probably apply equally to a cow or a horse or something else that made loud noise in the farming community, and I think that's a pretty difficult thing to do. But I think that by creating this one-acre lot, then if you have a really noisy rooster, were there to be an amendment to the dog barking ordinance, wherever that sits, then the discussion with the landowner could be that where you have your rooster sighted on your lot, you're disturbing the peace. If you move it behind your house, screened by your garage, and pen it in, you've got a whole acre to work with. That's a situation where you might be able to keep a rooster without disturbing the peace. So I actually think that by creating this one-acre lot minimum, we are accompli... Making... Accomplishing something. I don't think our work is complete unless the Town Council were also to go ahead and do something with the dog barking ordinance, but we can't do that.
Yeah, I... And at the risk of taking a position against my own self-malighted interest, as I said to you, the situation that my wife and I find ourselves in would be obviated by a 40,000-acre, a 40,000-square-foot restriction. But I'm here as a citizen of this town and to sort of plead the case for those who might find themselves similarly situated. Let me throw out a fact to you that I learned today during a little research. The southeast portion of Cape Elizabeth is primarily encompassed by Shore Acres. Sixty... The vast majority of the homes in the southeast portion of Cape Elizabeth have lots of 67,000-plus square feet. So anyone in... Any one of those people that are in Shore Acres, as an example, could have chickens. And I would...
An acre and a half, roughly.
Sorry?
An acre and a half, 60,000 square feet.
That's roughly an acre and a half, yeah. Yeah. It is really only the most densely settled areas that would probably be protected by the 40,000 square feet, talking about Mountain View and...
But if we did that, and the Town Council were to take up an additional regulation to solve more significant problems...
It should, yeah.
And then sort of see how that goes.
Whatever protection...
If it pops up again, I guess I'm... My mind would be, that's a fair compromise, and if it didn't solve the problem, then you go back to the drawing board.
It seems that 100,000 square feet is the rule of thumb for the housing of animals in this town, unless you're in a commercial setting. I'm not sure why you couldn't... couldn't conform that.
I have no problem with that.
You know, I have a question. And the question is, and I know we discussed this at the, at a workshop, and some of us felt that we shouldn't restrict as much as 100,000 square feet. But, you know, listening to the argument, it makes some sense. And I think, Victoria, you came out very strongly about restricting as much as possible. But how many farms are there under 100,000 square feet?
Not too many.
Not too many.
Are there any?
Well, yes, there, well, yeah, there's, there are places where you, you may have a large lot of land and yet farmers are leasing only a small area which they're actually growing crops on. So, there's always the question of, do you look at the whole lot or do you look at just the area they're farming?
Well, I suppose we could say 100,000 square feet unless the land is being used for commercial, commercial farming purposes.
But let's, let's assume, you, you used.
Under the ordinance, it says you raising of animals for commercial purposes, you need 100,000 square feet.
So, then 100,000 square feet wouldn't affect anything. I mean, it would be, you'd have to have 100,000 square feet if we put it in that way or recommended it that way.
If you accept the argument that the only reasonable, the only reasonable reason to have a rooster walking around is because you're raising chickens and that that is a commercial enterprise, and then the ordinance says that to have a commercial enterprise with animals, you need 100,000 square feet, then yes, you're not adding any more restrictions. If you accept that someone might just want to enjoy the farming lifestyle and have a rooster running around with the chickens, then yes, those people are going to be restricted by having less than 100,000 square feet.
And if you did the 100,000 square feet, would you still see the need to have the nuisance ordinance changed?
Well, it really limits how many people can, but, but we don't have any control over that. So, there's no reason to even discuss it.
That's true.
Good recommend.
Yeah.
Unless we have setback restrictions, it doesn't matter. I don't think, I don't think going to 100,000 square feet is going to solve the noise issue unless there's setback restrictions.
In fact.
But what it does, it limits the number of people.
It solves, it solves the problem for a greater number of homeowners.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
That's right.
But, okay.
At the end of the day, unless there is a, again, I ask you not to hold this against me in, in argument against my own self alighted interest. At the end of the day, if one neighbor is not willing to have respect for the right of others, this is all for naught anyway. You could have a million square feet, it wouldn't matter. And because of, because of the lack of restriction on setback. But we need to do something. If, if, if there were roosters crowing in Mountain View, in shore acres, as they were.
There'd be a lot more people.
At our house last summer, this hall would be filled. I implore you, do something. Don't kick this upstairs. Take it as a land use problem. Do something at least at this level. And then we'll try to do something at the council level.
We certainly haven't had any comments from rooster lovers.
No, and.
But we do have the recommended, the formal recommendation from the Cape Farm Alliance, with, which represents a significant part of the citizens of the town. And we have one neighbor here, and maybe we've had a letter for two. So, if you kind of balance the amount of public comment that we have gotten.
But I've got to assume that the Cape Farm Alliance is commercial farms and those are under that.
No.
We're not asking, I'm not asking that, that roosters be banned from Cape Elizabeth. I'm asking that roosters be banned unless they're needed for some commercial purpose to sustain the commercial farms.
And doesn't that protect the residential portions of Cape? I mean, the push we've been just, we've been going through the last year and a half is we're trying to continue to encourage the rural character of the town. So, we're not taking them out completely. We're just setting up for one particular thing, the rooster, a brighter line as to where they're supposed to be and where they're not supposed to be.
The rural, the rural character of this town has to be weighed in connection with the sanctity and the rights of the people who live in this town.
I agree. But, and I'm suggesting that imposing this restriction doesn't even take away from the rural character in a dramatic sense.
Of course it doesn't.
You know, it just, it, I mean, personally, it doesn't bother me, but I could easily see how it can get out of hand. And that's, you know, I'm trying to prevent a repeat of what you're, you're saying. And I just don't know that 40,000 does the trick. I guess that's what I'm looking at.
40,000 doesn't what?
Doesn't do, doesn't do it. I mean, I'm not even sure 100 does, but at least it's, it sets up something. And I don't think you're going to get a lot of people in here looking to change it to the opposite. Golly, I really want a rooster. Would you lower that limit? Not a big constituency, I don't.
You know, we can make it 100,000 feet. And if people, and Carol Anne, maybe you can talk more about this, but if there are people who need to farm and, and raise chickens, then they can go in front of the town council and ask them to lower it.
Go ahead.
Maureen already said, if you're going to be a commercial enterprise, as far as animals go.
You have to have 100,000 feet.
You have to have 100,000 square feet anyway.
So, that 100,000.
You can grow as many quiet plants as you want on an acre. So, then nobody's going to stop you. But you can't be considered a commercial animal operation unless you have 100,000.
Well, maybe we ought to make it 100,000 square feet, make it consistent.
That, that seems logical to me. I mean, and somebody can still have chickens on their home lot, right? It's the roosters we're talking about.
I guess I'm personally troubled with our effectively defining the keeping of a rooster as automatically equivalent to commercial agriculture without getting input on that question from the farmers in the community, including the small farmers in the community. So, perhaps what, this is a question that.
Sure.
We don't have specific input. And that's effectively what you're doing, saying that there is no such thing as a non-commercial operation that includes a rooster even for a short period of time. You couldn't even bring a rooster on to do whatever roosters do and then remove the rooster. You just couldn't have a rooster in that.
In a small farm.
In a small farm. And I, I don't feel that I have the expertise to say that that's a correct determination.
I hate to say this, but what this is sounding like is this needs to go back.
To a workshop.
To a more workshop.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I think that begs the issue.
Why is that?
The issue still comes down, at least in my humble opinion, to the fact that there is absolutely no way, under any ordinance in this town, to, to have some recourse against a horrible annoyance. It's not a farming issue. This is an issue about.
And that just points me to the fact, okay, it's not a land use issue. This forum, I'm sorry, go to the, go to the town council and see if you can't get the annoyance issue to be addressed.
I think town council, though, is going to look to this forum.
Not, not, not for the dog, not for the other amendments we're talking about. That's really out of, not our, not our, I won't even say jurisdiction.
Or view.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, I understand.
So, I mean, we're talking about a land use, land use restriction. And I'm trying to balance two things. The fact that we are and continue to be a residential community where people are entitled to peace and quiet. But we're also trying to encourage as much of the rural and farming community, even plants on one acre lot, self-sustaining, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and I'm, I'm, I'm starting to agree with Elaine, maybe because if there's some input that we need to figure out whether even bringing them on temporarily makes some sense, maybe that's one way to go rather than kicking it upstairs. Because that's my other alternative is to say, this is much more a political question. Is that confusing?
We, we've had a work, at least one workshop on this. And nobody's come up and to, to comment about wanting to keep roosters and made the argument that roosters aren't an agricultural activity. I mean, I, I just think if we have another workshop.
We're not going to get.
Other, we're not going to get a lot of comment pro-rooster on small lots.
I'm still unclear as to why the Farm Alliance wouldn't have done that if they, because they had the chance already once. I missed the workshop and I apologize for that. But we didn't get any, we didn't get any comment, or a written comment, Maureen?
Yes, we got a written letter from them. Yeah, John just, John just explained that they thought it, they think it's a noise or, a noise issue, not.
Right, right. So, from a zoning issue, they're saying stat of it.
But we're exploring a separate issue.
Right.
Right.
Are they pets essentially?
I guess the other comment I would make is something about the procedure we're going through tonight. The kind of interaction with the public that we're having tonight is kind of unusual. It's a different way of conducting a discussion. My guess is not every member of the public who might have wanted to be here tonight realized that this kind of continuous dialogue back and forth with the planning board was going to happen. Perhaps we would have had more people here. I'm not sure this is the best way for us to conduct our business. But it seems to me that perhaps we haven't given, because of the change in our rules, perhaps we haven't given the full opportunity to everyone to understand the process. So, I would feel much more comfortable giving more time for fuller public comment from all points of view on this question before taking action.
Is the lay, any, will that change our minds? I mean, we're delaying things.
It might change my mind, yeah. I mean, if I could have some people with farming experience come and tell me, you know, there really is no point in having a rooster if you don't have a commercial operation, then that's a really easy thing. But I know Carol has some farming background, but I'm not sure you're comfortable saying that.
I don't raise chickens, so.
Pardon me?
I don't raise chickens.
Right. So, we don't have anyone who can, who says that they're qualified to tell us that. And I, I'd like that input.
Is, is, is the proposal to amend the noise ordinances going forward in the town council independent of this process? Does anyone know that? No?
No.
No.
Nobody's made that proposal.
You're the only show in town.
Right now.
Hmm.
I don't know if that makes me want to act more or less, but.
Rather than moving forward with an ordinance to just kind of a guess and say, okay, let's just do something and move it to the town council, I'd prefer to do what we truly believe is the correct thing to do.
Yeah.
And, and I don't yet feel that I know what the correct thing to do is.
And I, I think it will ultimately point to the direction that you're talking about, that if we get the input that there's no reason to really have these things, have roosters beyond commercial operations. Personally, I'd be more inclined to move, you know, move the proposal to 100 and say, other than that, no roosters, if that's the input we get.
Right, I agree.
Which we don't, I agree with Elaine, we don't have right now. I don't disagree with you. I just feel like I want to hear from some other folks, too.
I agree with Elaine, too. No harm, your rooster's gone.
In the short term, there's nothing to prevent it from coming back.
I don't think this will last more than one more cycle.
No.
Workshop back to the forum, right, back to this forum. Does that seem, Barbara's not going to be here, so she's.
She'll be here.
Yeah, especially if we then explore setbacks in the definition of a structure.
I am really, I'm just really reluctant to go down that road, I honestly, but.
If you go back to a workshop, is anybody from the Farm Alliance going to show up?
We need, you need to ask them.
That's, yeah, specific, that's, that's a more specific request. Good, John?
Just briefly, we, we do have some members who have micro farms that have roosters.
Oh.
And we will attend a workshop just to provide input one way or the other.
That would be great, yeah.
And we'll make a point of showing up at that meeting.
Well, I think that's why initially we went with 40,000 square feet.
Was because, why?
Was because there were some small farms and we wanted to accommodate farmers and still protect the landowners in tight areas with small lots.
Can I make a motion?
All right.
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered, that the draft rooster amendments to the joint zoning ordinance be tabled until the January 2011, January 3rd or 4th. You know, that's the workshop. Can we table it to a workshop?
Sure.
Okay, January 4th, planning board workshop.
Second.
Carolyn, you second, sorry.
Motion had been made by Elaine Fowler and seconded by Carol Anne Jordan. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? All opposed to the motion? Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll take your time.
Be sure to come to the workshop.
I will. January 4th?
Yeah. Seven o'clock.
Sorry?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Here or?
And next room over.
Next room over.
On the other side of the wall over here.
And the other comment I would make is that any written statement from a member of the public can be circulated and become part of the public record. So, if you have a written statement that you would like to email and anyone else the same thing, that would also be helpful. And we would have it in front of us at the workshop.
Send it to Maureen, not to us individually.
Yeah, to Maureen.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next item on the agenda, the flagpole zoning ordinance regulations. The town council referred to the planning board to request to consider amendments to regulation of flagpoles, I assume. Section 19 dash 10 dash 2 zoning ordinance amendment public hearing. Maureen, do you have an introduction for us?
Yes, this is another item that's been referred to the planning board by the town council. There was, there were two residents, residents in particular who had a disagreement about the placement of a flagpole in close proximity to a sideline property line. There was a recommendation from the town council to send this to the planning board. Planning board did a survey of how flagpoles are regulated in other areas. They determined that the town attorney has agreed that a flagpole is a structure. And as a structure, it should have to comply with side yard setback requirements. And based on that information, the planning board has come up with a recommendation that no additional regulation of flagpoles is needed. So, tonight's public hearing is to talk about whether or not the planning board should go back and come up with some regulations or just send this kind of recommendation to the council.
So, since it's known as for public hearing, I will open the public hearing and invite the public to, who wishes to discuss the flagpole, well, the proposed amendments to the flagpole ordinance, come up to the podium and state, state your name and make your comments.
Do you have my name?
No, you have to step all the way to the microphone, sir.
My name is Bruce Nelson. I live at 890 Shore Road. And I'm here, I'm surprisingly here because this issue took place two years ago. And the town attorney ruled that a flagpole is a structure and is, should be behind the 20-foot side setback. And subsequently, although it took some time, the neighbor's flagpole was moved substantially somewhere else. And so, I thought that the issue was moot. And I'm surprised that it's here, but I understand that once something starts, it doesn't start very easily. So, I, I concur with the town staff who has, feels that the, this, any changes are not appropriate and that we should keep the rules the way they are.
Because of the interpretation that we have?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from the board. Go ahead.
Does this memo become part of what goes to the board? Because I just had some editorial questions about it.
Actually.
Why does it go to the town council?
Generally, the memo is.
Or is it?
Not something we vote on. It's usually something that either Maureen and the chair work out to send, send it over.
work out to send, send it over. If you think that it should be amended though, I'm certainly happy to.
I just had a question in the, in the discussion section in the second paragraph.
Okay.
The sentence kind of in the middle, "South Portland does not consider a flagpole to be a structure and does not require flagpoles to meet setbacks, but do expect the flagpole to be installed on the owner's property." I'm, I'm not sure what that, the final phrase of that really means.
So, somebody else's property, I guess?
Yes.
Oh, that seemed fairly obvious, I guess, but.
I shared the information that's provided.
Okay.
It's not required.
It should say, does expect.
Yes.
It does expect the flagpole to be installed on the owner's property.
As opposed to not on the owner's.
Yeah, meaning your neighbor.
As opposed to buying a flagpole and installing it in the right of way or on.
Oh, sure.
Somebody else's property.
Actually, the right of way would be just as much.
Or someone else's.
Yeah, yeah. As Jim said, that seems pretty obvious.
Well, you'd think so, but.
But the confusion that I've seen has worked, you know, Maureen, is, is people don't always know where their own property ends, in the right of way begins.
Could we say, do require that an owner?
I use the words that I.
That you got it direct, okay, this is directly from South Portland, okay, thank you. Mary?
I had, I had another question about this suggested motion. It stated in the negative and it seemed to me perhaps it would be more appropriate to state it in the positive.
Recommend no change, something like that.
Or recommends that the council make no change.
Well, when you make the motion, I, I agree with you on that.
Go for it, Elaine.
Elaine, okay, unless there's any other comments.
Anybody have any more comments?
But we can comment once the motion has been made and seconded too.
Motion for the board to consider be it ordered that based on the materials and facts presented, the planning board recommends that the town council make no change to existing regulation of flagpoles.
Second. Motion having been made by Elaine Fowler, seconded by Jim Hubner. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries seven, nothing. At this point, before we all pack up, we have the public comment on items not on the agenda. Hearing none. I would just like to personally say thank you very, very much to Barbara Schenkel. It's been a wonderful eight years serving with you on the board and, uh, I truly believe you are the best example of the citizen plan of serving. I truly mean that. Thank you very much for serving with.
Thank you.
You're here. I'd also like to thank all of you because it's been a pleasure to serve on this board. I see some other things that happen and this is really a great group of people, always has been, intelligent, committed and just delightful, so thank you all.
And you can make the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn, made by Barbara. Thank you. Good night. Don't wait till we're off the air.